The Brookfield Boys' Law and Order of June 23, 2019. If you want to.
Oh, here we are.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God in the municipal liberty and justice for all. I would like to approve, two of the following grants. Six twenty-seven nineteen, thirty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and six cents. Approve a payroll warrant for one million, five, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand and twenty-seven cents. Approve a payroll warrant for six thirty-nine nineteen of two million, eight hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand.
So, so the one above one hundred and five thousand, three...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I wrote the one down.
Yeah, it's still there.
Okay, ten, two thousand, twenty, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. And for seven eleven nineteen for three hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy cents. Another payroll warrant for seven seventeen nineteen for fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-one thousand and twenty-six cents. Approve payroll warrant for seven eighteen nineteen for eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. And approve an expense warrant for five twenty nineteen, which is a cleanup, for one million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-nine cents. And that this one, it's warrants a transaction associated with the interest on the bond with the police station.
Motion to approve, or a motion to approve, signing warrants.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
And then we have to approve sort in minutes of six four nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Acknowledgement and reports for public departments, ZBH for five twenty-eight nineteen, and the grand wide report for June twenty nineteen.
Motion to abolish.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
The Brookfield Economic Room pantry is accepting donations at the Mary Public Library, whatever libraries open, or at St. Mary's Church at Fu Howard Street during distribution hours, Wednesday nine thirty to eleven a.m., and Saturday nine thirty to eleven a.m. Senator Gobis gave hold office hours in Brookfield Town Hall from two o'clock p.m. to three p.m. on Wednesday, August. Does anyone else have any announcements?
Just related to Lucas, just quickly, that I did speak to him at a elderly affairs meeting on Brookfield, where he has not, he's been struggling with MasDOD relative to the, the legal expenses the town incurred relative to White's Landing, and not thinking that we're going to be successful, but at least we're trying, and what hopefully will come out of this, if nothing else, is that there needs to be a change in practice between MasDOD and communities, so that towns like Brookfield don't get stuck in the future, so that that's, if I go for one thing, it would be, again, a change in practice, so, so that we just don't get stuck. So I'll, I'll actually begin with one second.
Karen, you have the...
I don't have anything to add, no.
First one here is to sign an engineering service contract for South, South Pond Dam.
Motion to sign.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Well, you know, it's a mandatory thing that we have to do, so there's not a lot of choice in mind.
Now, which, which budget line is just going to be wind up getting pulled from, do we know?
I don't know, I don't know.
I don't know, how do you know what mine is?
It's separate.
Oh, I don't know, you're talking about, well, South Pond Dam, was that the eight thousand dollars? That was, that was an article, right?
It was an article, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct, that's the one that was sent, yes.
Our next one is to sign the comments street lease amendment.
Motion to sign.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
This will fall signed by the trustees and the healths.
Right, we just need to get a copy back, KP.
The next one holds the right of first refusal, you already did verbally say this in minutes, but Alan wanted something else, so just satisfied this client.
He wants a warrant, yeah, yeah.
And motion to sign, um, first right, the right of refusal on property, uh, one eighteen Fistale Road and fifty-seven Amal Assis Hill.
Right, and a mo- a motion to sign the, uh, right of first refusal, or non-acceptance, actually, of the right of first refusal, that we, the town's not interested in the purchase of that property.
Second.
On favor. This is the one Karen has to know.
Yes, I'll do that as soon as I get back.
What this does is this puts in motion the funding, once this money's received, of open space money available for activities like Lewis Field, we've been talking about. Actually, there's another one coming soon, that will underperform a little bit more.
Now, this isn't Shenwood, they're not putting a sole fund over there, are they?
No, they're not. We have received no official notice of what the intentions are of the property. I did look up who the new buyers are, and they have not contacted me either. So, it's anyone's guess at this point, I imagine we'll be hearing at some point from one of those two parties in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is to, to sign the revised beach contract, now this is a good time to leave sign, because it keeps coming up with something.
Well, you wanted a fence last time, and, and we, we agreed to agree to not have a fence. The highway department has taken down brush, and it looks great, so...
Okay, and can I have a motion for the chair to sign this?
Motion for the chair to sign the revised beach contract.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
And the fees, if you want to read them.
Yeah, I was, I was going to see that, you must have read my one.
Yeah, he was talking about a sidewalk, but now it's official. It won't happen this year, anyway.
It's two dollars per person for daily access, five dollars per family for daily access, and twenty-five per family for the seasonal access.
Yep, that's what was discussed in the earlier... And again, the likelihood of that being charged this year is not good, because the season's half over, it'll be more towards next year. And again, the idea is that if someone's going to pay something, they'll hopefully help maintain.
Okay, now, our next one is to sign CMR PC invoice number six and twenty.
Motion to sign.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
The amount here for invoice number twenty is forty-five dollars and twenty-four cents.
That's just the supplies, the elements of the management, it's for Hayden High, I think it's all of them.
It's Hayden High, yeah.
Yeah, Hayden and High. And the next one is invoice six, and that's six thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and twenty cents.
Motion to sign.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
By the way, strike grant was on the agenda, and Cindy asked me to take it off to the local council.
Right, and I want to explain that too, so when we get to other, we'll talk about that as well.
Okay, the next one is to sign letter of engineering invoice.
Motion to sign the letter of engineering invoice.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
This invoice is for one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Yes, that's additional Hayden High.
Mm-hmm.
The next one is to sign and vote for the South Pond Bridge easement.
Motion to sign and vote to approve the easement at South Pond Bridge.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
This is a vote you have to take, too.
So, I moved, I moved that the board approve and sign the dedication of municipal parcels, which shall be then forwarded to town council for recording the registry of deeds.
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
The next one is to sign and vote on a PB PC housing rehab.
Right, motion to sign, Pioneer Valley, agreement for housing rehab.
I'll second that.
Um, and what these are, if I just, I'll explain in case people wonder what they are. They are, um, include Pioneer Valley, and what it is, um, if people fit the criteria, they, um, they can have this loan, and they have to have it for fifteen years. And if they don't, uh, sell or do some, sell property, then it'll change later. Otherwise, they have to pay it back for different issues. So I guess, I mean, one has to sign.
Now, is there a link to that program from our website, so that if people were interested in participating, they can?
Uh, let me see, they got a picture of the house. Thank you. No, they just said if there's any questions, they can get in touch with Timothy W. Brennan, who is the executive director, and, um, the number is four one three, seven eight one, six zero four five.
Okay.
Agreed.
And you just put in the program.
She signs, I have to sign here.
Yep.
The next one is to set meeting dates.
And the plan is?
And the plan is, uh, we thought here, Karen and I had talked about this today, um, instead of having a meeting, we would have had one on the sixth. We thought we would, August sixth, we thought that we would skip that week and start with thirteen, because what this will do, this will put us back on the warrant schedule at the town council.
Yep, so August thirteenth.
Thirteenth, twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, September.
Ten, and the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. Do I have a motion?
Oh, your motion is separate, please.
Uh, I'll second.
On favor.
Aye.
If we need something, we...
Yeah, we don't need another common meeting, and also, that's good, because we come on vacation, not meeting now.
Good.
Okay, well, next one will go on to, uh, just to start.
So, the first opportunity is, there is an option that presently going on for a lift, uh, for trucks and the, and the like, it would be something where it would be cost-effective if the highway department for the maintenance of the trucks did have a lift, um, that we could do more of the work in-house. The importance of this thing is, it's a sick, brand-new lifter, this van is due, and it's being put on, on by MasDOD, it's used equipment by MasDOD. Brand-new would be sixty thousand dollars. For ten thousand dollars or less, we could pick this thing up and have it available to the town, where there is, our money is within the highway budget that can cover the expenses of receiving it and getting it installed and usable, uh, for ten thousand dollars or less. What I would recommend is a motion that suggests that the highway superintendent inspect the, uh, equipment, uh, it would happen tomorrow because of the auction timing, and with, with his agreement, that it is something that we could ta- take advantage of, such that it is, that we would proceed to secure it for the, for the town.
Okay, quick question, were we talking about doing this out of their expense budget, or are we talking about using, do we have any funds in the repair replacement account for, that was originally intended for used equipment?
That, I mean, I don't, Cindy said that there was money in that account, and I didn't ask which account.
Okay.
But it could go on either one.
Because I'm willing, I mean, I'm willing to authorize it out of the repair replace account, if, if that's considered an appropriate use for that money.
And then, we could tag that on to, to the motion, as far as where the funds would go.
Because it's equip, because it is equipment, even though it's not necessarily...
You should come out there and start coming out of the operating budget.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I, again, you, Ryan can go look at it and see where, where it goes, and if it's, if it still makes sense, then...
Can we shoot a note to Lori and find out what the balance is in that account? That'd be great.
Yep. Sorry, a motion to move forward to investigate and, uh, secure it, if possible, if Ryan thinks it, uh, useful.
I'll second that.
And also, commodity, uh...
Yes.
Fleet repair replacement account, if the funding's available in that location.
And used in that, yeah, has it, yeah.
Okay, I'll second them, okay. On favor.
Aye.
That's, that was the first thing on my list.
What's the second?
Second thing on my list is, there was an earlier, um, uh, item on the agenda relative to Rice Corner and Gay Drainage and the step grant, which we will not be going forward. And so if anybody is concerned about it, they can blame me, because what I wanted to make sure we were doing, when and if we got to the Rice Corner situation, that we corrected everything from there downstream. And the importance of that is that we know that there are issues behind the three homes on Rice Corner, it needs to get fixed. Ryan has a way that possibly, we, we don't be, need to be blowing up leads or anything like that, and we need to work through with the homeowners, the idea that the town could pass over their property, and that the tent, they would, the owners would approve that.
Approve it with some sort.
And that it's an easement of a sort, and that with that, that piping would then start downhill towards Gay Road. The thing that's changed about going this year versus next year is there needs to be an engineering study, which probably will come out of the highway department's budget, where the culvert at Ken Grimes' house is undersized, and it's been backing up into the wetlands that are there. So we have the guy that's responsible for ecological restoration from Department of Energy and Environment. Here, Ken, he came, he inspected, and he said that culvert's undersized, so we need to do an engineering study to say that that culvert, it needs to be replaced, and with a larger size. What that does is, that whole roadway, if you're familiar with the Teff's house, you go down a very steep little bank to Grimes' house, and then you go uphill. What, what happens is that road, that whole roadway in those area of those three homes, or is actually needing to be elevated. And again, Ken Grimes remembers when they were kids, that he actually ran, and you can imagine, that's eighty years ago, right? That he actually, the culvert that was there originally, he and, he and his buddies used to run through the culvert.
That's how tall it was.
That's how tall it was, so we know at some point, we reduce the size of a culvert, and, and it's only forty-eight inches today, which is, and why it's backing up into the wetlands. So now, we'll do, Ryan will work with the owners on Rice Corner. Sorry for, you know, a delay with them to move forward, but at least we'll have a, an engineered plan for that piece, we'll have an engineered plan for the Gay Road piece. And then what happens is, you're now going downstream to Rice Corner Cross, where we already know that that culvert, at one point, is going to be replaced as well. So, rather than having things done piecemeal, and hopefully with this, we'll have a, a good study of all three places, so that all comes together. When it's fixed, it's going to be fixed, rather than piecemeal.
Makes perfect sense.
That's that one. And then, uh, just FYI, um, you're familiar with me going to elderly housing meetings and the like?
Yes.
And I went to a meeting the other day, and interestingly enough, as a follow-up of that meeting, uh, this is, that particular meeting was related to age-friendly and dimension-friendly town, and how, how we could be doing some things. We are doing some things between the churches and the like. Um, so, but the good news is, after I came from that meeting, I got a telephone call. As you were, probably remember, I was talking about trying to find ten acres for, um, how, to see if that's possible. And what I was encouraged to do is to, if you could ever find ten acres on the bus route, that it would be looked upon in favor. So as I am doing this, I am doing that as a chairperson of the Brookfield Congregational Church, I am not doing it as a, as a select member. Should there be interactions with this going forward, if it goes forward, who knows? If it were to go forward, I would refuse myself for a town-related activity to focus on a faith-based organization pursuing elderly housing. So, that's what we, where do we stand, though? Let's cross our fingers.
Yes, we'll cross our fingers.
And then I would only ask one question, if you, you had a meeting today, a finance meeting today, just is there anything that we should know about?
Uh, well, I was going to write up something and send it to Karen, too, but we have very good financial planning, we have different things. Uh, what I think Lori had said was, the Department of Revenue has given her until September to pull the eighteen off.
And she feels good about it?
Yeah, she feels good about that, and then also, she's, she's going to try to get everything done by the end of November, so that she can get an stable data balance sheet for that.
Okay, so then that would then put the audit activity into the year next year?
No, she's saying the audit probably would be happening until the spring.
Okay, so it would...
Yeah, a little bit until the spring, and, um, they're hoping that Tom scan will come down here in two or three months. And then she's changing, she sent out today, um, she's, she's going to have a new one, hey, well, she's, she's putting out, and also, she's going to have, um, new, um, expense warrants, too.
So is Karen going to maintain the original document?
I'll have to give out case and why, but we haven't, we didn't get it today, and she was going to send it.
Oh, can you get it sent today?
No.
All right, so, but, but Karen's going to hold the, the, the original copy of the financial policy?
I'll have a copy, yes, definitely, but actually, it's going to be, as you put into your financial policy.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying, you're going to, you're going to maintain a current date of, uh, revision for that document.
By the way, it went through, um, treasurer's office, so Brenda has it now, but she's done, she's going to pass it on to Al, and then when he's done, it's going to be, she can have it.
Okay, and then you throw the attachments and...
Right, that's what, uh...
Excellent.
Sharon? I'm assuming the payroll documents and voucher documents will be provided to anybody who needs them as far as town departments and the like, so, okay, will they be available in electronic form as well as hard copy?
Well, I did, I gave her the email of anyone that presents, actually, the chairman of, of all the committees and, and all the departments, so she's, she's planned, she told me her plans for to email them to everybody, and then she's also going to put a hard copy in everyone's mailbox.
That's terrific, because the planning board submits that we keep an electronic copy in our offices.
So, what else, I was, like I said, I'm looking at, so, no, you know, so the Karen, but the meeting was very convenient. We started at ten, I don't think we were out there until about noon time, because we got a panel appointment. Every department participated, everybody got along very good, and, uh, we're hoping to start meeting on the third, um, Tuesday of every month. And then September, what we're planning on doing is having a, um, department meeting, able to say, a hard time head meeting, we'll try to do it at noon time, and we thought we could do it like a little pizza party, to get everybody here, and, um, she, uh, Lori wants to do is to talk to everybody about, you know, overspending, so she wants to see overspending budgets, with all the deficits that we have this year. So she wants to give them a whole, I'll believe, different things that's going to be changing in public office.
Good.
Excellent.
Now, you're agreeing that, um, once everything is done, that it's not going to be able to talk about special town meeting.
Oh, yeah, she does, yeah, they both, she doesn't think with everything, until everything is done, we really shouldn't have any talk about having a special town meeting. Because we've got, really got to see where we're finding.
Well, we get to know what we're, see where we are, and if it happens before the end of the regular year, great, if not.
But she said, but also, I guess Al's kind of concerned, you thought that we hadn't had a special town meeting for the, set the tax rate, she says, no, we haven't had a special set of terms.
No, because actually, that was voted down at the town meeting, so, um, the tax rate can just get set per the normal procedure.
Yeah, so it can be early, because I guess usually, since everybody gets things aligned, so it can be set normally.
Well, presuming that we're not going to have a special town meeting, that's, that's the thing. And, you know, I think, in part, it depends on when the scheduling gets filed.
Yeah, she's hoping, she's hoping to get all of that, and another thing, the treasurer's office, they're working, trying to work on some figures for the, uh, FY seventeen and FY eighteen, cash book, for both those years, and I don't hire them, they can't find too much that was done, they all need to care. So they kind of started to write off, freshening on there.
Okay.
And then eventually, after everything is all, um, straightened around, I guess Lori just wants to have a run, and they're going to all, even out, yeah, right.
So, so I have a question related to if, if the cash book, if they're having to reconstruct the cash book, I thought they had paid a consultant to do the cash book for twenty eighteen.
But then they can only find, um, he only gave them one sheet of paper, and Lori said it should be more than one sheet of paper.
Absolutely, so, so, well, I would take issue, do we need to have a formal communication with that vendor indicating that their work was unsatisfactory?
Yeah, well, they can walk around and see if they can find some more, but if not, I think we probably should get, I would have asked, you know, where's the rest of it?
Oh, yeah, they should, they should get the, the supporting documentation.
Oh, sure.
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah, they're on it though. Their work in the problem.
So everybody got along fine today and, you know, everything's, everything's going to come through, you know, come through ahead, we're going to make everything straightened out, get back on, straightened out and...
Yeah. Brenda had a report today with some back taxes that are going to, a chunk of back taxes that are going to be paid to town or something, so all positive.
Oh, and then another thing, I don't know if I mentioned it to you in the past meeting or not, yeah. Brenda and I, maybe you have gotten, you know, maybe she gave you the tax lien?
Yes.
And some of the properties show that they overloved, lost taxes on them, but the properties naturally not even worth that kind of money, you know, as much value than what is owed in taxes.
And that's why I asked what I'm, you know, I appreciate the fact that they printed the report out of VEDAR, but what we really need is to understand a true report from probably the Treasurer's Office or...
Did she get you all?
No, we had...
Now, the only information was two, we got two copies. It looked like Brenda had provided one and the Treasurer's Office had provided the other, but they were identical reports printed out of the same section of VEDAR.
Okay.
Okay?
Because I did, she had said she, she...
Absolutely. And I don't have an issue with what was provided in and of itself, but what my question was at the previous meeting was, can we get a report where, whether in part, we may need to get some of the information either from the Treasurer's Office or from Cobbleman and Page to find out, okay, of these properties, which ones are actually in land court?
Yeah.
And that sort of thing, so that we could get a true, like, plan together. And I guess the question would be, is normally that planning responsibility resides with the Treasurer's Office. Are they in a position to take that on? If they're not, what sort of support would, would they need in order to put a plan together and to delineate, kind of like when Keith did it for us, where he showed, okay, this one's in land court, this one's here, this one's there, this is a low-value property. So, so that we at least have a concept of what's the plan. So to your point, some of them, they have all this taxes of, but they're low, but they're low-value properties. So then the question is, is what's, what's the best practice? Is there something available from the state that's an option for us with the low-value properties? You know, what's, what's the best practice? There's got to be something out there, information related to that topic.
Well, and flip it around from low value to high value.
Value, right.
We put a plan together of those couple of high value and we're chasing.
Right, exactly.
And we're going wrong. So if there are other additional...
There may be some stuff in the middle that, that's worth pursuing, but might need a little extra work.
Push.
Yeah.
So we could have that, that would be great.
Okay. A lot of the properties, like Brenda and I, it looks through the list, a lot of them are, property just overblown. I mean, oh, people didn't know those houses.
And we're on to the next three properties as far as the town.
The town.
And I had a conversation today to give Kathy an estimate, Kathy asked Cindy for an estimate to do the campground, to finish the campground. And so that we're on to, that would be the next project to go forward.
Yep.
And now, did you check in the box?
When you went in there today, because I didn't know if she left, maybe she left something for you.
No, I did check it, no.
And then Kathy had another question the other day. And it was from, she went to the CIP meeting and Mr. O'Callaghan had said something to her to the effect that he didn't want her pursuing anything over $10,000. He wanted, she got permission from that.
That's what she said.
Oh, well, I think we need to...
And I said, I don't, I, he said with the selectmen, he said something.
He said the selectmen agreed that she wouldn't apply for anything over $1,000.
No, I didn't, I didn't remember anything.
Again, it approved by the...
It wasn't approved, it was notifying.
She said...
I understand that, but the discussion was that we would notify them if our capital plan was changing and that it should reflect pursuing the grant. So, so it's supposed to be a notification that, hey, we're pursuing this, if it's approved, we're going to be able to pursue adding to the plan.
We could fight, we can tell some money, we're going to fight some money.
Right, so... Now, perhaps I'm misunderstanding it, but I, that's the way I remember, and it was like a while back that that had been discussed. Now, that...
Yeah, did we had discussed it or...
I think we discussed it at one of our meetings.
Well, Peter was here.
Peter was here. And, and we said absolutely, from a standpoint of, there had been some misses in communication where we had decided to go after some grants and have not communicated it to the CIPC, but I don't recall that discussion saying that they needed to approve it before it went forward, because there are times when that stuff is very time sensitive.
Yeah, because that's what Kathy had said, that's what...
So, so...
I said I would bring that up.
Yeah, so, so we probably need to send a formal communication to Peter saying that, you know, our recollection of that was that we would send notifications if we were applying for anything that would be over $10,000, but not that, and, and it's more for incorporation in the plan. Because one of his concerns that he's voiced many times is that he feels that the selectmen don't exert enough, like, forward pre-planning to the overall, like, capital plan of the town. Okay? And sometimes it's because of the fact that we just, we are looking for these opportunities and we might go after a project that would have been lower priority if we were fully self-funding it, but if there's a grant money opportunity to execute those, those projects, we try to do what makes sense, right? So I remember it being a notification, not an approval, and I think that's a message we should send clearly to both Kathy and to the CIPC that, hey, there are going to be times where we might change the plan because something comes available that wasn't part of our, like, decision-making process for, for the capital plan. So I'll try to make it to the next meeting.
Oh, that'd be great.
So if, if you all concur with that, I'll, I'll try to make it to the next one.
So I think we've got a perfect example in front of us.
Right.
We have open space, we spent two years doing a bunch of stuff. One of the things that was listed as one of the high priorities was Lewis Field and Rent. And what can we do? Flip it around, Kathy's gone off, she's found money, they call it park money, it's 70% state money, it's 30% town money. We now have this payback of monies that from, what am I trying to say? The, the idea of someone taking money out of chapter, or taking land out of chapter, chapter land.
Yes, chapter land.
And now we've got some money. So now we have, we have a pocket, we have a pocket of money there that's available. We have a playground that needs to be ADA compliant. We're dealing with something that's, like, the last number I understood was about $80,000 of all-in cost to get a brand-new playground and Kathy's pursuing that. And I would, I would think that, again, we were all kind of, all on the same page, that that was the priority, that's what, that was the approach and that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
So again, if there's some misunderstanding, let's get it in front of everybody now because I think having, having a brand-new playground that's ADA compliant is probably an important thing that we should consider.
Yeah, I would agree.
I agree also.
So I think, I think it may just be, you know, a context issue.
Sure.
So...
Okay. Well, I think else under other people, we want to correspond?
Okay.
I have nothing.
Okay, this is something else again from CHA. On August 21st, the EVINE channel located on Spectrum Basic CHA TV will be re-banded to SHO HQ on the channel lineup, so we are committed. If you have any questions, you can reach johnmaha@john.maha@cha.com. This is, yeah, this from KP Law. It's a notice of a rate increase as of August 1st, the monthly rate will be going from 175 to 185 with parallel equals a one-half the amount. And this is the first time they have gone up in 10 years. And I wonder if this will be the proper time I could bring this up. I don't know if we should do this for another year, but it seems, you know, a lot of times when different departments use KP Law and they have them come out or something, it has to come out of our legal funds. So I don't know if it's any way that they at least have to budget it.
It's all that too, because I, like, I said, I know, they get their own doubts and some...
There's a few that don't.
The tax, tax, a lot of it, they...
So there are a few of them that don't get, they don't have budgets so that they can take the money out of theirs, so the money comes out of our legal funds.
So we are, it's so hard to predict. I mean, that's the thing.
That's, and that's the thing.
But maybe what we should do is, is to have, again, maybe a procedure or something that talks about identification, early identification of legal matters and how we're going to approach it. Maybe that, that's something that, maybe we should, that's, that's probably a good project as well.
And so there's a lot of times, you know, the third town meeting, people see how much it costs for legal fees and they don't, don't understand that this is other departments that are using, you know, our legal funds.
Well, I mean, do we have a good analysis or breakout of really what the funds have been spent on? Because I don't think...
Is Michelle...
I think we could see it.
It did say, yeah, Michelle gives it right down in the first section.
Yeah, if we go, yeah, I don't have him in front of me either, but...
Maybe it took time for an update.
Well, I was going to say, I don't think that the, I don't think that really the, I want to say that the billing for some of those other activities are really pretty nominal. I don't know that it's honestly worth breaking out. I see a lot of times, particularly when you're dealing with budgeting like that, trying to delineate it out to the departments might feel convenient or, or feel like it's, it's greater accountability, but really all it does is it complicates the billing and the management of the budgets. I mean, and it goes to, then you have to do transfers of, maybe it would have to come out of the selectmen's legal fund and go over to Highway's legal fund and it just, I think actually it's a level of setting up all those separate accounts and then trying to say, okay, well, is it the health department that needs to pay that bill or is it, you know, the, the planning? You know?
The only question I had on was because, you know, like, like, before town meeting this year and they saw the jump and they go, I figured, huh, what the jump? They think that it's the selectmen using this money, you know, it's a, you know, selectmen's line item, but actually it's not and other people use that line item also.
So maybe what we do is return, I hear we're best signing as far as the idea of delineating, and I agree with you as far as it complicates things.
Right.
Flip it around. If we were to have a report from KP based on the last fiscal year...
Goes in the annual town...
Pardon me?
That goes in the annual town report or something?
Right, this, this bucketize is basically where the mon, where monies that we budgeted total, overall. And then these were the activities, you know, not down to a minute, but now...
But like land court versus, you know, HR consulting versus like contract reviews, you know, that sort of thing, right?
And if we could have that kind of break rate and have it at, at one of our meetings in the fall, just to look at it from that perspective and say, do we want to delineate or not? Probably not.
Right.
And then flip it around, but this is what we spent it on, we're budgeted for this much. And what we can then do is turn to the departments to say, if you've got anything on the horizon that looks like it's got to come out of this bucket of money.
Yeah.
Well, it's just a thought, yeah.
Yeah, all right, it's a good one.
Yeah, and absolutely, I think, I think increased transparency would be great. I just think functionally, it, it's something that I would personally not be really excited to do.
Yeah.
So, is that it, I guess?